On two contractor buses and one district bus. One contractor bus had a hard drive issue. So the hard drive, so how it works is that when it's recording during today, it records to an SD card. Okay? And then it takes that and it record, then it moves that, what's on the SD card to the hard drive of the DVR. So we had, like I said, one contractor bus and one district bus that it was not moving to the hard drive. It was just on the SD card. Does that make sense?
Has it been corrected?
Yeah. So we called, got new hard drives. I actually put, that was on bus four, was the contractor bus. I put the new hard drive on that bus today at the end of the day. The other one is in my office to put on our bus tomorrow.
Was that under warranty?
Yeah. They actually sent us an extra one in case we had any other issues. So now, there was, there was a question. So I thought we had more issues than that, but it was really my issue. So when you plug the hard, when you take the hard drive off the bus and you plug it into your computer, you have to plug it in with both wires that come off the USB port on your computer. One powers it and one reads it. When I first started that, I was just plugging one in and it had worked previously and I could see past data. But you have to have them both plugged in. So once we did that, and then you can also take, James has a laptop, we can take and plug directly into the hard drive on the bus. So we've done that. We've checked every bus. Every bus is working besides the one contractor bus. And I replaced that hard drive today, so I will check it tomorrow to be sure that it's recorded correctly.
So when James gets on the bus with the laptop or whatever, is he seeing the data that's on that?
We just, so we asked the driver if we can get on first. We plug into it and yet we go back like and check 30 seconds to be sure it's working last month or the month before, just to make sure that video is working. Because you have to see the video to be sure that it's aligned.
No, and I understand that, but I mean, the way that was set up, James was not one of the people that was supposed to be seeing that anything, any data on that stuff. Correct?
We were, he's not viewing, he's just making sure it comes up and then he shuts it off. But I can't, it's very difficult for me to get to every contractor bus. So he was helping me get it done. And we asked the driver before we get on.
And you also give the driver the opportunity?
Yes, the driver, yes. And many of them got on because they wanted to see it. Dwayne got on with the other day just because he wanted to see what it looked like.
So the protocol you're using, the bus drivers have been okay with?
Yes. We've always asked them, make sure it's okay. We don't get on any bus if it's not okay with them. But we don't view long periods of time. I mean, you literally bring it up that day, make sure all four cameras pop up, we shut it off.
Have they tested to make sure that the cameras are picking up the stop arm violations?
Yep, we actually turned one over today to the PD last week.
Today?
Last week.
Okay, last week.
We had a driver or a person on this, a stop arm, we turned it over to PD last week.
And all the buses have been tested to see if they work?
Yes.
Okay.
So we've got to check four tomorrow, bus number four tomorrow. Because I think that's where the driver.
So I visited the buses this week myself after hours. I went down to see the buses because I was curious as to how these cameras, by the way, some of the buses were unlocked. And so there is no, I have pictures too. I'm not good at pictures. So this particular bus, the stop off camera is pointing to the front of the bus. So I don't see how it could record anything. This particular bus, the stop off camera is at the top of the bus in the middle. So to me, I, I didn't understand how that could record anything either. None of these seem to be consistent as to the placement of the stop off, stop on cameras.
First group, so the second, the group that came in and did the contractors was all, they're all the same. This was the first group that did ours.
But shouldn't they have been consistent? You get on the buses. Now, when we agree, when we approve the cameras, okay, there was going to be a camera in the middle that was like a 360 or whatever to, okay? One at the end, at the back, and one at the front. Correct? Am I correct in that? Okay? One of the buses I got on, they're on this side of the bus.
Correct. Because you can't put it in the roof.
Why?
Because it runs the wires. You've got to run the wires inside the channel.
So do you think that that bus is picking it up?
It is absolutely covered, the ones on the side. You can see down on every seat.
Okay.
From the ones I put there.
Okay. Then how would this camera work when it's in upside down? It's installed upside down.
Okay. I'd have to know what bus it's on and look at it.
So that one certainly couldn't correct me. I don't see how, because, and I know I'm short, I get that. But I was in there, unlocked the bus, and they, I don't see how they can pick it up. I don't see how.
I can show you.
I want to. I'd like to be shown how they can pick them up.
Sure.
Because what I saw is placement on these cameras, and certainly not these stop arms. I mean, good grief, one of them's not even pointing to the stop arm, it's pointing to the front of the bus.
It's a district bus?
Yes. I'm assuming it's, I don't know whose bus was what, okay? I don't know who belongs to what bus. I, I don't know. I just know they were buses down there and I went down there Tuesday night. You can probably see it on the camera.
So all of the, so our, our, the first set of installations was not the quality of the second set of installations. I can tell you that.
Second was better?
Yes.
So do we need to have the company correct that?
If we have issues with that, they will correct that, yes.
Because also, the cameras or the DVRs, isn't that what they're called? The DVRs? They're like, they're installed like really weird. I mean, here's one that's installed upside down. This one is installed this way, which I get that, I saw this on a couple of them. But then, this one is inside, you lift the box thing in front, it's inside with the installation of a bus.
Yeah, because it has that overhead compartment.
Yeah. And it was put inside there. That seemed like weird.
We have several in there that way.
Okay. But, okay, and then if you open the little fuse box thingy, you'll, see, my husband helped me with all this. So you open the side of it, the little fuse box thing at the side of the bus where all the, this is, right here? That seems like an awful lot of cord that's left over because that's running up to install the cameras. I mean, I still think these guys did a shoddy job.
I'm not as happy with the first group as we were with the second.
So are they going to come fix the first group?
Not the first group. The first group's out of business. They're not coming back. They, that was a contractor for 247. So if we had issues, Bert Cram is the person that installed the second set of cameras. And he was assured, we have issues and he needs to make the right move.
Okay, so the incident, the whole point of these was safety for the kids. So the incident was on the bus where the, the girl was rubbed up. I'm just going to use that. We didn't get filmed of that, right? Was this, this was prior to you figuring out they were plugged in wrong? The little girl?
I looked at like three, I looked at three or four different ones.
Okay.
If you can tell me the bus number later, I can, I can go back and, because we should be able to still find it if that's.
But they are recording now and it is staying on there. They're not riding over themselves.
We went all the way back to before they, as they weren't, when they installed it. And James looked at the day they installed it and you can see them installing them. So he has it safe besides that one bus.
Well, do you think they can fix this one stop arm? So it's not facing the front of the bus and getting?
We can make sure that it's catching.
Okay. All right.
Okay. All right. The USDA extended the ability for each student to receive free breakfast and lunch, just like we do in the summer. So during the summer, kids can eat free breakfast and free lunch. So they extended that to the fall. Originally, it was going to go till the end of 2020. They have now moved that to the end of the school year, actually till June 30th. So it goes till June 30th. So each student in the district can have free breakfast and free lunch. And it is a reimbursement. So to your question, it is actually a little more than we pay OVA per meal. So we'll help cover some equipment costs. So this is, and I can't give you the exact amount off the top of my head, but it is, but it's different for lunch and it's different for breakfast. It's different at elementary and it is middle school and high school because of the portion sizes. But it is more than we actually reimburse OVA.
So what's that based on? The figure they came up with?
Federal rate.
Is that like the national rate of the meals or something or?
I don't know.
Is it, is it like the rate that they do if you own a daycare? Because every year they change that rate. If you're serving lunch, you get this much. If you are serving breakfast, you get this much. So is it kind of based on that type of rate?
I assume it's figured out, it's figured in DC and it comes, it comes through, it follows through the state to us from the USDA. But all our kids, that started, second week in September, I think's when that started.
How much increase of participation did we see?
I can't tell you that. I don't have that information. We can look, but I don't know off the top of my head.
Did we see an increase?
I don't know. We have to, I have to pull those numbers. But we can, we can pull, just the end of August to the middle of September and then after that.
Any student, any, they can just go into the for free?
Yep. They only have to, they have to pay for, the only thing they would have to pay for is seconds or extras. So hollacard items, like they want an extra piece of pizza or something like that, slushy.
So we have seconds as an option for all students?
Yeah. COVID leave, I know that's been some questions, but each employee has received information via email regarding COVID leave and what that looks like from the, with the federal government, which happened this summer. I've spoken to each person personally who's tested positive and been quarantined to explain all of their options. No employee has had to use any of their personal leave if they're out for COVID, quarantined or have been positive. They've been able to continue their work from home or they've had to use the 80 hours of COVID leave, but we've not deducted any from, anybody from their sick leave, which is what I think the board wanted to do. So we've been able to do that without any issues.
Well, I think what was brought up at the last meeting was are the employees receiving 100% of what they received while they were working?
Yep.
So if their paycheck is, let's just say 500 a week, they're still getting the 500?
Correct. Correct.
What happens if they get quarantined second time?
So most of them have been able to work from home, so they've not accessed any COVID leave. So they always, so if they got sick, then they've got 80 hours of COVID leave. If we got a second quarantine, I would work with them to protect their paycheck and do whatever we had to do. I mean, that's, I mean, we don't want anybody to get deducted. It's not their fault. So you have work comp, you know, if they got, if we knew they got it at school, we have lots of ways to access those. There's usually four buckets we can access.
But they do all know if they're quarantined, they'll be at 100%?
Yeah, I mean, I, I've talked, I talked to every single person that gets quarantined. Got our handicap bus, came in last week. We did, before we signed any paperwork, we paid them, obviously. James drove the bus, inspected the bus underneath and throughout the bus. We're very happy with the bus that we received, but it has been delivered and is in use. So that is, that's good. Antigen testing for, for COVID. So you probably have heard this on the news. The state of Missouri is making antigen, antigen testing available to districts. You can order enough tests for every kid and every staff member. The nurses and I watched the webinar, but we then decided to collaborate with the Douglas County Health Department. We are not comfortable performing tests at school. Just not, I'm not comfortable with that. So if we want to order them, we can, you can do it at an alternate location. And the Douglas County Health Department has offered to perform those tests if we want to. We're going to be working through that process. If somebody wanted to go over there and get tested, the Douglas County Health Department would have the test for them instead of us giving it at school.
Send something that's free?
Yeah, it's free.
What about if we send someone over to the health department?
So our health insurance pays.
It pays for it?
Yeah, it pays for it. Most health, most, most health insurance companies waive that fee for testing. But the health department is actually getting a testing machine. They're still waiting on it and so it would be free as well, the state health department. But these are free as well.
How long does their test take over there?
If it's an antigen, the antigen test that we're talking about takes five minutes. The, the one they're getting takes 15 minutes for a positive, 30 minutes for a negative. So those are antigen tests. So the PCR test is the one they send to the lab and that's 24 to 48 hours.
Is there a difference in accuracy?
PCR test is more accurate than the antigen test, yes.
Is that something where we could get the test and take it over there and let them use them or?
Yeah, so that's what we'll do. We'll, if we order them, we'll have them shipped straight to the health department and they do the paperwork, they store them, they account for them. They'll never come here. You probably don't know the percents of how accurate they are. So it was on the webinar. If I told you, I'd be honored to. I didn't really.
No, I was going to give you mine.
It's, it's, it's over 80% accurate, but I can't tell you if it's 95 or 90. I mean, I listened to it on Friday afternoon, but is there maybe an issue with false positives? With this particular test, I, I'd have to go back and look. Okay. October 7th, Governor Parson announced, Parsons announced $133 million in funding to support critical services. $95 million of that is from CARES Act funding. Another $40 million of it is from general revenue. $100 million of these funds will support K-12 education, higher education, and out of that 161.5 million is going to K-12 education on a per pupil basis. So that works out to about $60 or $70 a student. If it was $70, it'll be around $90 to $95,000. How that's going to be distributed is not my preference. It's not going through the funding formula. It's just going to be, we will get a document from DESI that we'll have to fill out. We'll have to agree to some, some type of agreement. We haven't seen it yet. And then they will send us that, those dollars. I would rather go through the funding formula, but since I anticipate most of ours is coming from the CARES Act funding, they can't run it through state aid formulas. So we can use that in a variety of ways. But we haven't, I don't know all the issues that was just announced last week, that they haven't sent out any more specific issue, guidance for it. We talked about teacher computers on last month, so all elementary was the one that was up this year. All of their computers have been ordered. We gave them a choice of a desktop and a Chromebook or a laptop and whatever they chose, they received. So knowing that the, the laptops were going to take longer, we knew that that was going to be a Christmas time delivery model, but it was about 50/50 on percentage. The Chromebooks are in and being ready to be passed out to students and to staff and the desktops will be in on Monday or Tuesday of next week. And the Chromebooks have been ordered, so, or not, the laptops have been ordered, we're just waiting the arrival of those.
Where do you order these from?
So the cheapest bid was CDI.
What's the laptop price?
$900, $1,000 somewhere in there.
So how come after we had our meeting last month and we asked that they be, gotten for them right away, did we just not go to Best Buy or someplace like that and get them?
You can't buy that many from Best Buy. We tried to, we tried to buy Chromebooks. You can buy, there's a limit on the number you can buy. You can't get, you can't get mass quantities from them.
How many do we need?
How many are you working on?
Um, 25, 30 laptops. And they have to meet, they have to meet specs to work on our network as well.
It seems to me there, we could have gotten them somewhere else quicker, that these teachers could have them. They're working under extreme circumstances as it is.
I understand that.
And there was nobody else, even a different bid, that we couldn't have gotten quicker.
They were the quickest. They're, so CDI, CDWG, so the major ones, they're all, they all buy from the same people. And they're still waiting from their suppliers to get them.
What if we get to December and they move that back order back? I mean, they've, they've got dozens of them at Best Buy in Springfield right now. Anywhere from $3.29 to $650.
Oh, they got $1,000 ones too?
No, I mean, $650 will get you a touchscreen, I'm sure. I'm sure that in that range, I'm sure there's something that will work on our network.
Oh yeah, there is. So I looked. I'm the one that looked them up today. You can get them from Best Buy, you can get them from Sam's, and I believe there's other, I mean.
I was down to look to make sure they would meet the specs to work on the network.
I just don't know how they can go with something that's locking up or spinning or, I mean.
It doesn't seem fair to them.
Well, we've tried to replace anything that's not working with something to get them through to that time. I mean, it's not great and I understand that. I can, I can ask John to look and see what Best Buy, I mean, I tried to buy Chromebooks off Best Buy in August and we called our Best Buy rep and they were the same timeframe to get us that many as anybody. So we'll keep working on it.
Question.
Yep.
So we just replaced ones in the, in the elementary building?
We replaced middle school and high school last year and the year before.
Say that one more time.
We replaced the teacher computers. We were doing it on a yearly basis based on age. So we did the middle school and high school last year and the year before. And then this year, we were up to do the elementary.
So after these, after these all come in, everybody should be in pretty good shape.
Have more than a three-year-old computer.
So how often do you replace them?
So end of life is five to seven years.
Not down days, it wouldn't be. I mean, I think three years would be, would be maximum. I mean, shouldn't, shouldn't we be on some kind of program that they're replaced every three to four years? Because a laptop, the way they are now, they're disposable. You know that as well as I do. They're a disposable thing. That's why they, you know, it seems to me that there should be some kind of deal where the teachers, they're just replaced every three to four years.
That comes back to, I mentioned the other night, sometime in the future, I think we need to come up with a five or a 10-year plan. And when we do that, we just need to plan on rotating. Computers out somebody every year. And same thing on buses. Instead of waiting till the end of the year, a week before we spend money on budget and vote on it, let's have a plan, you know, all the building improvements, let's have a list. And this is what we need to address the next five years. We know it's coming up, we need to do something with it. And not just wait till the last minute and say, oh, well, let's do this or let's do that. We, we need to develop some kind of plan. Computers need to be on it, so.
Okay.
It's just a necessary.
It is.
Well, are you looking to see if we can get some here faster for these people?
We will. I'll do it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Currently, the foundation formula, it started the year at 55% proration factor or reduction of 45%. We are up to 88%, so it's only being reduced to 12% at this point. I talked to a, I was in a meeting today with a senator and a state rep. They do not believe that anything will change with that until at least the first of the year if anything changes. They'll get to 100% funding. So we're still on a 12% reduction at this point. That's it, sir.
I'm going to pick your brain for a minute. And I may be wrong, but I think earlier we were talking about, I think the stimulus plan would be $75 billion at that time?
The, the one that's in Washington right now?
Right. Originally, they're planning $75 billion for K-12.
Yes, correct.
And you said our part of that would be like a 2.6.
Correct.
Which, I arrived at 2.6, but I want to know how you arrived at that.
So I arrived at that from talking, not, I did not do the math myself. So, you know, I, it was a guess on how many students there are across the nation and divided by the number of kids across the nation, but I did not get that number from, I got it from DESI when you looked at, they thought it would be three or four times at least what we got from the first stimulus package, just based on the number of dollars that's being attributed to this stimulus package.
I believe that sooner or later, they're going to pass one of those stimulus plans. I mean, it don't matter if it's before the election or after the election. There's going to be beaucoup money in it for education. What kind of strings do you think is going to be attached to that?
It's a great question because everything we, you know, we, the last spring was pretty easy. They just wanted to get us the money as quickly as possible. So I, I don't know. I wish I knew because they, I talked to a guy today that was an aide for Senator Blunt and they're working on a bill that they want to add an amendment to the stimulus package for rural high-speed energy. So my concern is people, anytime you start adding amendments, as you know, it, it seems to die a quick death. But there will be strings attached. I just have no idea what they're going to be. It depends on if it runs through the US Department of Ed or it comes straight out of Treasury Department.
I was thinking maybe we need to come up with this five-year plan pretty quick so we know what to do. I mean, the idea that we can actually have money to spend is just like, really?
So, yeah, you know, the last thing I listened to President Trump was, you know, he was going to put it off to after the election.
Yeah. Well, that was. This one is every day now. So correct.
But if I hear something, I will let you know.
Are you going to say anything about that?
No, because I don't have the information yet. I will next one.
Thank you. Mr. Dogger.
Can you follow up on some of the questions about COVID leave? As we talk about some of the training we did in the summer with using some of the remote teaching strategies and tools, we talked about our PD days that we've had so far. Would you follow up on some of that? You know, I think initially when, you know, we were thinking about reaching our students, if we were in that scenario for those that selected virtual distraction, then as we got ready to start the year, we realized, you know, hey, as, as we have teachers placed on quarantine, this is an avenue for them to still be able to connect and not have to use leave. Because, just because that scenario you mentioned, you know, if I'm somebody who has to quarantine once this month and a couple months down the road, again, to no fault of my own, I have to quarantine again, you know, there's danger. Those hours are gone pretty quickly. And I'm not aware of any teacher we've had on quarantine that is not in some form or fashion.
Does their job.
Tried to connect with their kids. And it's not, you know, when you describe it as a growing thing, it was, it's new to all of them. You know, those technology issues all of a sudden are magnified. You know, honestly, when you're in a traditional classroom setting, you know, I think like in my classroom, if I had the whiteboard and my markers worked well, it's in pretty good shape. You know, that would not be true today. 75% of my kids, that's great, 25% it's an issue. If I'm quarantined, I'm in real trouble. You know, as we go through some of those challenges, that has been a, just another, I guess, benefit for teachers, a way for them to not have to use sick leave or COVID leave because they're able to connect. I was in a classroom one day this week. So we were working on the speakers, making sure it was, it was connected. As soon as we got the. As soon as we got the speaker going, we were having issues, they were gone. Teachers, they had routine, they, they went through the morning, and clearly the students knew it. It was, it was, it was really cool to watch, watch them go through that process. And we talked about PD days last time. I think we did two since we met last time. Um, bring in Dr. Hall while he's not here. Now, he's here, we'll do it. He's not, I don't, I don't tell him. He had done some work. Elementary had undertaken a program and started some training last year. Program feels very strongly about, there's lots of districts around us that have implemented the program that, that have seen success and strive for their students. This is supposed to be the year to implement that with our kids. And just with some of the interactions that you're supposed to have, some of, you know, with so many of our kids not on campus, you know, as Dr. Hall thought through that, it's not the year to continue that. So, we'd had some four PD days lined up, went to training for staff on those last two PD days and, and rescheduled that and pushed that back because of the right now, the needs that are currently facing teachers. Did we get all the problems solved and, and answers? No, what, what gonna happen? We're lining ten PD days up the road while we're, while we're getting all of those questions answered. And we're gonna talk here in a little bit about some of the things we're looking at and working in buildings with on remote instruction. You know, so we implemented a plan and you get started and you figure out, okay, here are the things that aren't working, what can we do to fix it? We had a conversation with the team today. Hey, here's a potential solution that we know somebody else is using. What are gonna be the things that come up from doing that that don't work for us, that don't fit our scenario, that don't fit our situation? And I know we've had conversations with other districts. They have taken our different approaches from what we have at the start. Well, they wanna know what we're doing. Well, we wanna know what they're doing. You know, sometimes, I think that question was asked, I think Dr. Nash was back there. I think it was one of her teachers. Hey, I'm afraid this new thing's gonna be harder than what we're doing currently. So, it is. It, whatever we implement at this point, it is going to be new. It is not going to be what we've done previously. You're gonna jump in and go, and then you're gonna find the snags, and you're gonna find the things that don't work, that you didn't anticipate. But we tried to be, we tried to manage that time to be able to try to lay a nice support during those PD days. And then, just on a daily basis, and I sat out that day, tried to set foot in every teacher's classroom. Still haven't made it around. I've got a list and I'm getting closer. Just to see, I mean, that's it. You know, you tell the teachers, hey, even if you think this just applies in your setting, share what the issues are. You know, we're gonna talk through it, we're gonna mull over. It might apply somewhere else. It may be just a thing we need to know for another setting that, again, we hadn't anticipated or thought about. We talked a little bit about, talked about our federal funding. With some of the relief money that we got last spring, has that accounting process worked out? I think we've actually got access to some additional, you know, we talked about title money. We've got access to some additional funds that, so we are, we're looking to see, you know, it's one-time money, it's not gonna be something we're gonna have access to again. Uh, you know, are there some improvements in classroom technology if we can, uh, are there things like that that we can, that we can get to, to help our students or help our students and our teachers? One of the things I got written down, I know the principals mentioned it, Dr. Nash mentioned it, coming up on the end of the quarter, parent teacher conferences are coming up. It, it's gonna look different than it ever has. I know each building's got, got a plan mapped out. We're trying to schedule those. So, walking distance so that you can, uh, just control that flow of traffic while still meeting with, with folks to be able to answer questions and meet needs. That's all I've got written down. Anybody have questions on that? Yes, sir.
I know some of these kids that are on virtual. How many of these kids do, do we not even have contact with? So...
None. We haven't had contact with at all.
How many, how many are failing?
Several. Two of them.
Yeah, what's the state gonna say about that?
So, what's the state gonna say? I don't think the state's gonna say anything. But what are we trying to do to solve that issue? We're gonna talk about, um, in our, on D.
Well, again, back to financing, how's that gonna affect?
It won't. So, um, financing is based on average daily attendance. So, whether that be, um, pockets and seats, or whether that be, um, virtual, it's, it's funded. Now, there's some caveats in that virtual issue. Um, but we're, we will be using last year's attendance anyway 'cause it won't affect our funding mechanism.
I, I went through and, I've got a list of every virtual kid we got. I had asked the principals at mid-quarter, send me the grade reports for every one of those students. You know, we look at that, and we look at that every year for all of our kids, but I wanted that sorted out just to see, you know, we had to come, we, we know for the vast majority of our kids, virtual is not the best solution. We know that, you know. Whether it's because of the interaction with, with peers, you know, we talked about some of the peer tutoring, some of the, just some of those activities our teachers use and are so successful with, just lots of reasons why. You know, we have a group of kids who, who do it very well in that setting. And we do, we've got some, we look at those grades. They're doing fine. But when you go through, because that's why, I believe there are kids and some teachers that have not been able to get in touch with. Are there kids that we have not been able to contact at all? No. E- every kid has a grade of some kind. Um, so, so we have, contact has been made. But now, there are lots of students that, for various reasons, are not being successful. And I wanna be clear and say this. It's through no lack of effort on our teachers' part. For some of it, it's, you know, not connecting, they're not setting a schedule, they're not, um, that's all we can do. And that's, when we talked later on about some of the conversations. Hey, we've identified for this group of kids, for this setting, whatever, it's not working, what can we do? What are we gonna do different now? Uh, just trying to get those kids where they need to be. Go ahead.
Is one of the groups that you're having, I'm curious as to how the special children, how they're doing, doing virtually. I don't see how you can teach a special student virtually.
We, we, we talked a little bit about this. So, for a lot of those kids, there are related services, whether that's speech services that they're giving. A lot of those students are still coming in and doing that for some of those needs. Now, there, there are some that aren't. Um, and, and, you know, what you're talking about with a, with a learning difficulty and so many accommodations, you know, s- again, to me, the issue is not, I think I can put a plan, a plan in place to, to make that accommodation for a student that's gonna be doing it virtually. The problem's being able to adjust instantly when, when that's not, when it's not working. You know, that's, we always lay out a plan, you know, teachers in the room, hey, I've got this plan, I get started. I'm having to adjust, hey, minute by minute. And that, truly, that's probably the, the number one reason why I say the majority of our students, they, they need to be in front of the teachers. And, and that's probably the single biggest reason why, because our teachers can make adjustments on, on the fly in the moment. You hear us talk about form of assessment, things like that. That, that's just a teacher monitoring, is this student getting it while I'm talking about it right now? And when they're not, making a change, making an adjustment, partnering with somebody. Uh, you know, those things just look different in the setting. You know, that's a, that is a specific concern as well.
And I'll be the first to say, I know teachers are making an effort.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, to try to contact.
Yeah, nothing to talk about. Absolutely.
Uh, in fact, they call over and over.
Yep. Yes, they do.
But, uh, some of these kids, and I can't even tell you where her at or what grade it was. The one story that came to my mind is, uh, I was told that, uh, parents couldn't check up on the kid 'cause the kid had front booked and changed the password, and parents couldn't call up to see if he was doing any work.
So, we, we have, parents should have, parents have access to, to our Google classroom themselves, not through their student.
No, that's a device, yeah, that means, you know, it's what they're having to use. That's a total issue.
We have been very specific about, you know, we offer training and we, you know, and we, parent, we want parents to have access outside of the student access to see their kids' assignments and how their child is doing as well.
Are we gonna retain these kids or what are we gonna do?
There are gonna be some very specific conversations-
Quickly.
With admin and parents that, you know, to me, you're at the point, you gotta sit down and, here's the challenge. You know, you know, this student was more successful in the seated setting than, than the not. And again, this conversation takes place in, in traditional years, normal years anyway. You know, we're having these conversations with the parent, hey, if this doesn't change, here are the possible outcomes. Those are the kinds of conversations that take place at this time of year. You know, we've got students, it's gonna be very difficult to say, hey, you have to come back seated. If there are health issues, if there are, you know, underlying, you know, they're just exaggerating. You know, to magnify those concerns, but, uh, those are the conversations, hey, your child is not being successful. What are the possible solutions, remedies that we have for this?
So, we're gonna try to get them back in the classroom, and we're gonna talk about that.
Okay.
No, you're good. You're good. It's a good question. It's a question we've been talking about for-
Weeks.
Weeks. And how to do that, and not disrupt everything else too, I guess.
Yeah, it represents its own set of challenges.
Specifically, you ask about, so, and we've got to the point where we, we've made a hotline call on one set of parents, and they have some special needs students as well. We're, we offer to send vehicles, we've offered to send buses, we've offered to, trying to get those kids in for these services. I mean, we are, Mrs. Dalton has called and called and called and called trying to get those kids in. Um, that, we'll take them half a day, we'll take them a day, we'll take them whatever. I mean, at some point, it's educational neglect on, on behalf of the parent, and we're continuing to work on that.
So, last month, we talked about, you know, the, the load that we put on the teacher. And we talked about, you know, was there any ideas that you had that might lighten that burden that they've got? You know, whether it be curriculums, changes in curriculum, or whether it would be just someone making the calls to the parents and asking why, and so the teacher doesn't have to keep making that call after time. Have we, have we found out anything?
I can address part of that at the elementary level, so for sure. So, we had a, some, we had teacher requests at the elementary level. If a kid's been quarantined and out for two weeks, somebody to help them get caught up. So, actually, I had a teacher come to me yesterday, has had these two kids out. Um, we found, um, one of our retired teachers that does some tutoring, is staying at, staying longer and working with those specific kids, um, to, um, make sure they get caught up on their homework. Make sure they get caught up with the rest of the class. Because, you know, she's trying to teach the class in front of her, it's hard to get those kids caught up. So, we are offering that service as well. Um, you know, Debbie has talked, talked to me about, you know, kids that need, you know, she, um, tests kids to see where they are. And, um, we, and I've told Dr. Hall, we will provide whatever support we need at that, um, for those teachers, absolutely.
To maybe have someone else do the testing, so they'll have more time in the day?
So, we, we, the district will provide, you know, as long as we can find somebody that is qualified to do it, that is willing to do it, we will provide whatever service we need to help the teacher.
Well, I also spoke with you about, you know, getting a sub in to help these kids get caught up because they're out of the classroom for so long.
Correct. And that's what, I had a teacher come to me yesterday about that. We have a teacher in doing that.
Yes.
Yeah. The, the one request I've got, I'm not sure if anybody else has got any, but we got that started today.
Yeah, that would, that would be good.
I know. It's just-
Yeah. And we've got, so that's happening today.
I'm glad it started today, but-
Yeah. Yeah, 'cause we got to. I mean, the teacher can't teach all the twenty kids in front of her and catch the two kids up that have been gone for two weeks 'cause they were quarantined, no fault of their own. They missed curriculum. It's very difficult to go back and forth.
But I think what is misunderstood is it takes a teacher to think of that, to tell the administrator so they can do something about it. And I know for myself, it's aggravating to have to go to you and say, hey, can we do this? Can we do that? Can we try this? Can we try that? Because I'm trying to think of solutions the whole time I'm trying to take care of my kids, and I'm packing stuff home every night. And we just started it today, which I'm glad we are starting something. But we also have a lot more issues too that I can bring up and share with you later. I just hate to keep coming to you.
I'm happy to hear it. I'm happy to hear it.
Well, some of the follow-up with what you asked, I mean, it's all literally like classroom to classroom. Hey, there are issues we, we gotta know. And the reason being, none of us have ever done this before. You know, so some of this you have to get so far along to identify, okay, we didn't anticipate this, we didn't anticipate this. I mean, that's just where we are. I wanna ask a clarifying question for you. You say curriculum, I assume you mean some type of online resource? Okay. So, that's part of what I was talking about today. So, we, we sat down, I sat down, and it is a type of, in our alternative school. So, that was the follow-up question where the teacher says, hey, the solution sounds worse than the problem. Okay. So, the answer, to answer your question, are we exploring that? Yes. Now, when you go through and start talking to the teachers, hey, here's what this would look like, at least in that one teacher's opinion, hey, I, I'm settled into this routine. I, I don't wanna tackle something else that's new. Because you, you know, you're taking on the new online resource. It's not, Johnny, you go log in, it's not what that is. There's a whole set of training that takes place. Somebody to monitor that, somebody to assign that, somebody to keep track of if the students make progress with that. So, again, that's, and, and example. But those are the kinds of conversations we're at. You know, if there was a, listen, if there was a one fixed solution, every district would be using it, and, and this wouldn't be a, a universal conversation. I mean, everybody, I'm not aware of anyone that is not trying to find out the way to do this better. Uh, you know, so those, those programs exist. We've got the close sitting on, on my desk for a program for a-
To expand our alternative school program.
To, to just expand it. And to me, what I think you're asking about, an online delivery system.
Well, do the teachers have access to, to that? And I, and I know that there's not one online system that works for off-grade levels and all, all subjects, but there are some really good ones out there for maybe two or three grades in certain subjects.
We've had access to, to-
But do we, do we allow the teacher?
We've had access for years.
Okay.
Study Island is probably something you've heard us talking about. That's something teachers have had access to for years. You, you can, you can deliver some lessons that way. It's that, it's ready-made units, uh, that's something that's existed for several years in this district. USA Test Prep is another tool that your teachers talk about. So, we're talking online resources, delivery systems. Kids are in the system, teachers all have access. And we talked about some of the trainings we did this summer. Those were specific tools that, that we offered trainings on. I've got some teachers who have used it for years. I've, I've got teachers who've used it. That is their primary resource and delivery system prior to COVID. I have some who haven't logged in in five years. Uh, so that's why, you know, we offer those trainings multiple times. We go through that, uh, those training sessions, those PD opportunities. Again, whatever it is, if it's not what I'm used to, there's learning curve. It's not what I'm used to doing and delivering. It's out of my comfort zone. So, but no, the answer to your question is yes. Those resources exist that we have access to. We're looking at additional ones.
Good.
Anything else?
The teachers that have been quarantined, did we manage to get certified teachers to take their places?
For the most part, not completely. But for the most part, we have had, um, so we have one. Connie Dean has worked every day, I think, since school started. Um, maybe one or two. We haven't had a certified teacher in there, just 'cause we couldn't find one. But for the most part, there's been a certified teacher in there.
Do you think increasing something made a difference or? Do you think increasing something made a difference or no way at all?
No way, I don't know.
We've got additional subs that have come in that have been done, online testing. There's probably three or four right now that have done the online training test.
Yeah, the new way to get a sub cert.
It's, they're not certified teachers, but they're certified because they've only done the training. But we had, on the checklist, I mean, you can see it this month, they're not before.
I'm sorry. I was hoping we'd be able to have more certified. I know they probably don't want to mess with the kids after they get away from it.
Some reliable subs we've had in the past are concerned of COVID.
Yes.
They're, I mean, they, they've said, hey, for now, I just don't want to serve.
Yeah.
Is there any certified teacher?
It's not that much of a danger.
Okay.
Anything else?
Next is our discussion and action items, facilities and ground program review. I think Monty was supposed to do that. He does six, so he's got something for us.
So, you have the program review, it was uploaded to you. We have brought in some, used some retired employees to help because we do have extra cleaning that has to take place. Just, you know, we talked about the 67 restrooms that have to be cleaned in the middle of the day. Well, that doesn't allow the daytime custodian to clean up the throw up in the elementary or, you know, help with the lunch trash. So, we have bring, brought in somebody during the day to help just cover those buildings. And we are looking at getting some part-time subs at night to help with that as well as, as we, if we can find them, just a couple hours at night to help take, to be sure that we're doing all the cleaning that we need to do in the eight-hour period that the, that the custodians have. But it's going, seems to be going well and we did get all of our supplies in finally, but they are working diligently and they're doing a good job. I mean, they're working hard. Teachers have pitched in. We were, we had a couple of subs on quarantine. Teachers have pitched in, they've taken out the trash at the end of the day, they wipe down desks. They, they've been troopers to help as well, so we appreciate them.
Could we utilize some high schoolers?
We actually just added a, a high school girl, an 18-year-old high school girl. She went and got a background check and she's going to start working a couple hours at night to help fill those roles. So, yeah, we'll continue to look for them. She's, she was working at Sonic and she wanted to change jobs. We just need to approve that program.
We need approval on it?
Yep.
We need a motion to approve the facilities and ground program review. Do I have a motion? Mark makes a motion, do we have a second? Dan seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, motion passed. Next item, early childhood program review. I think Dr. Hall was supposed to do that, but he's, he's not here.
So, we have our pre-K, this is our pre-K and our PAT programs. Dr. Hall submitted the review for your, or the program review for your prusal to look at. Great comments, some, some good suggestions, there was two or three really good suggestions as I went through it. Overall, parents seem very happy with our preschools and our PAT program. Like I said, on the PAT program, there's a couple things I think we can absolutely look at. It has been, this fall has been a little bit hard because setting up PAT visits, those usually happen in the home. So, I know that she's been trying to do some of that virtually, they've been trying to be, she has been in some homes, but just have to be careful. But our comments are good and our teachers do a great job, pre-K, we're very happy with that.
And we need approval on it?
Yep, and so are our parents, I guess, more importantly.
We need a motion to approve the early childhood program review. Do I have a motion? Brandon makes a motion, do we have a second? Troy seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Seven zero, motion passed. Next item is our solar power study. I think we have someone to do, give us a rundown on it?
Mr. Ron Schrock from Ron's Electric out of Seymour.
Yes, yes. Okay.
They have, they have a map.
Yes.
We'll also, and we'll pull that back first, however, however you want. They have a map in their hand and then we have this, the...
I did also bring some extra maps if anybody wants any. But, okay, so, just, my voice is still just a little weak. I am past the COVID deal myself. So, look, they, I was asked to do a study on the feasibility of putting solar on and obviously you all had all approved that last month or two months ago, whenever it was. And so, I kind of looked over, went over the, the, your bills with the city of Ava. A lot of, if you look at your map, let's, let's start here with, with your map. And if you look at the map, your, your, your facilities are basically divided into, into three main meters. You have the blue circle, you have the brown circle, and then you have the red circle. And those, and then in there where the X is, is where the meter is for those different, different units. Those are all primary meters and they're running on, they're demand meters. The way a demand meter works is if you're under a demand charge with it, with your power company, you get a lower rate, but then you pay by your highest consumption. You pay a fee off of that. So, consequently, when systems are on demand metering, you, you're down more like in the eight cents a kilowatt range on your, on your billing, but then you have a, a several hundred dollar, three, four, five, six hundred dollar a month demand charge that is on top of that makes it not quite as feasible as far as, it's still feasible, but it takes, it's a longer payback because you're not paying just actual usage. And so, if somebody, if something would happen that you set a high demand, you don't get as much off of your power bill because your power bill's going by the act, your, your solar, your solar feed, your return on investment is going by the actual usage. Now, you do have the, with the green circle here, that is the bus barn, you have a variety of other buildings that have individual meters that are operating on just actual usage, much like anybody in a residential build would have. And those have, I'm not sure, I think it was like a, like a, I think it's around a 10 cent, a kilowatt. So, those have a faster payback and no, no demand fee. So, I did, what I did here is I basically looked at three places where, where I felt like it was feasible. A lot of your flat roofs, your, or your shingle roofs, okay, I'll put solar on there if you want me to, or, you know, you can do whatever you want, but I would not advise it. When it comes to setting up the racking on the flat roofs and then, and then over a period of how many years, income to companies and they have to recoat these roofs, now all this has to be moved or taken off and back on and you would lose a lot of production return on investment because of the costs of, of taking it off and putting it back on. So, I would, I would not advise any solar in the brown area other than you could go with like a ground mount system, like, and I marked in yellow where I would feel like would be a feasible place. There could be like a system over there right beside, right above where it says Ava Middle School, right along that fence there. There could be a fairly good-sized system put on there and, and fed into the, the gym there. The, the places where I would feel like it would be much more feasible to put solar on roofs would be, okay, I would call, is that the elementary gym or Catholic?
Elementary gym.
Elementary gym there. That is a nice metal roof, fairly new building. It could go on there and be a, pretty much a lifetime system, not be touched. Another really good place, probably one of your most ideal places if you were going to go with a big system, would be over on the ag shop, on the south side of the roof of the ag shop. It's correct orientation for, for your best production and right close there to the main meter and it would feed into what does the ag shop, the maintenance building, and the admin buildings there. And so, I, I basically wrote up criteria, you have your, you have the sheets that I gave you there, I wrote up criteria for like, for like four different places, whether, whether there would be a ground mount system, two ground mount systems, I just used kind of average numbers. And that would be there right above where it says Ava Middle School, over there, where it says Ava Elementary School, there in that back, there's a little green area. And probably not just super fond of that little area in there, simply because you're, I was told by the, the, your, what is his name?
May Mister.
May, yes. That, that, there's quite a few buried lines going through there, so it would be a bit of a trick, setting a, setting a system in there and not damaging and buried lines. Over here on the bus barn is, that's a, a new building feeding off of, straight off of regular meter standard usage. That would be a great little system if you would want to introduce the, the concept of solar and have it where students could see it, introduce the concept, not put a lot of money into it, it wouldn't take a big system to, you could put as big, in, in most of these buildings, in, in, in any of these circled areas, you can go as big a system as you'd want to go, as you'd ever have room for because your usage is so high with these, all these big facilities. But, that doesn't mean you have to go that big a system. You just, basically with solar, you just decide, I, you know, this whole point board is my bill and, but I only want to spend this much. So, I'll put this big a solar system and take care of this part of the bill. The rest, you're just going to get billed like normal. So, you know, it's not like you have to go in, like where I made these, these sizes of what you could do in these different areas, let's say you wanted to put a system on the ag shop, you could put a little system on the ag shop if you wanted to. You don't have to put a big system on the ag shop. The numbers that I put, and I'll go over these numbers here in just a second, the numbers I put can all be ratioed down. You know, you put smaller, you get smaller return on investment, you get smaller. It just, it just all ratios out. So, let's go over the, the sheet there that, I think you all had these sheets.
Yep, that's up on the TV.
Okay, so let's go over that for just a second and then I'll open up for questions and hopefully I have answers. Okay, the ag shop, which is the red circle, that roof there, the average, your average monthly usage there is around 6,000 kilowatts. You have roof, you have enough roof space on that building for 60,000 watts of solar and that would actually yield enough to pretty much offset that bill. If you were to put that, if you were to put as big a system as I listed there, you would like that, the bill for that, for that area, the red area would, the, your, your electric bill would basically disappear. A system that size would cost you approximately 108,000. Your, your average ROI from a 60,000 watt solar system would be about 545 a month. Projected payoff would be 16 and a half years. Now, you see the red lettering down on each one of these? Does it show up there?
Yes.
Okay, you see the red lettering. The reason I put that red lettering on is I, ideally, if you were going to go with one of these large systems, would be, and, and we'd have, you'd have to double check on all the legalities. I know this gets done, I know it's legal, but I'm not sure of quite amount of years how it has to work. But if you get somebody in the area that wants to purchase that system, put that system on and lease it to the school, then they can get this, the 26% tax credit off of their federal taxes. And then they can lease it to the school on a lease option to buy for so many years and the school is making them payments on it based off of what the savings on electricity is and then with a certain amount of time buying a system. So, there's a, there's, that, that, that's the reason I put that in the red there. That's how that, that's how the tax credit would come into that equation if you can get somebody to do that. So, that first list there is for the ag shop area. The second one there is a small system, what it would take on the bus barn. It has an average usage of 750 kilowatts. Around a 7,000 watt solar system would be taken to offset that and that would give an average yield of 770 kilowatts per month. The power cost on that building, because it's not a demand meter, is around 10 cents a kilowatt. Whenever I give these numbers, I give them as around because there's always a fuel factor, a fuel adjustment, some months it'll be higher, some months it'll be lower, that you don't have any one rate. This is what it is. So, I kind of had to pick a middle-of-the-road number. Another thing is, is the numbers I'm giving you here, I personally have five solar systems between my place and a commercial property and I recorded these things monthly for a long time. I'm not, I'm giving you factual numbers. I know what these systems will produce. This is factual numbers. Another thing that I don't do when I'm talking about projected payoff time, I'm talking about power rates today. Okay, I do not take, there's a lot of companies will come and tell you, we'll have, they'll knock four, five years off of that pay deal because they'll put a 4% per year increase on electricity. I don't know what electricity's going to do, if any of you do it, I'd like for you to tell me, but, you know, it could be all in who wins the next election. You know, generally speaking, whenever the, whenever a lot of that is controlled by the Democrats, they put a lot of focus onto renewable energy and the cost of, of energy goes up. Whenever it's controlled by the Republicans, they don't focus on renewable energy and the cost of fossil fuel produced energy goes down. I'm not being political, it's just a bit worse. I've seen it over the years. So, that, like a little system to do that on the, on the bus barn would be somewhere around 14,800, projected payoff time would be 16 years. Again, you take that tax credit deal and you can see what it, what it would do if someone was to sponsor that. So, I can go down through these others, but, you know, they kind of each follow the same, they kind of each follow the same, the same set of criteria. Is there any questions?
I have one. And for instance, let's go with the bus barn. 750 kilowatt hours a month. In the summertime, when school's not taking place. Supposedly, it will be less than 750. But still, yet that, that solar system will produce 770 and in the middle of summer, when we don't have school and our usage is less, the sun's shining a lot and we, we should get more production out of the solar system. What happens?
Your highest, good question. Your highest production is, and I did not address that in here, I'm really glad you brought that question up because what I'm going to tell you here is going to fit any of these, any of these systems. Your highest production, if you look at a chart, will be March, April, May, and then you hit June and July. Sun is your greatest asset, heat is your worst enemy. So, you hit during the summer, you, the whole thing will take somewhat of a dip and then you hit, then you start hitting in the fall and the temperatures drop. There's nothing I like better than a 20-degree day and a brilliant sun. My system will be operating light, it'll just be going to the max, in fact, over max. And as, whereas you get in the middle of summer... And as, whereas you get in the middle of summer and it's 100 degrees and the sun's real bright and you'll be operating at about 75 or 80%, because heat is, everything's worst enemy when it comes to operating. So, it does actually take a swing through the summer and then it's, it's a, you know, like your, your peaks are, are spring and fall. We don't talk about solar in December and January. But, okay, so what happens with that, with that power usage? Okay, this the way, this is the way your power company works. During the month, everything is traded one for one. What you produce during the day, if you produce twice as much as you're using during the day, you're putting money in the bank during the night it trades, it comes back and, and you, you, you get that credit, one to one. At the end of the month, whatever is left over, let's say you had a month that you had almost no school, you had real good charging and you had 400 kilowatts that you didn't use. It banks up for the next month at avoided cost, at full sale cost. So you're, you're probably gonna, you get about half the credit toward the next month's bill. And, and it continues to bank up until you turn around, until you hit months that you use it.
And I assume there's a final reckoning at the end of, at the end of the year, somewhere down the line, you know, if you produce more than what you used for the past year, you can't just continue to do that for year to year?
Yeah. They, they, it does get canceled off once a year, once a year it will get canceled off, you will never get a check from the power company. But it, it does continue to be a, it does continue to be a, a credit there for a month when you have a high month. Most people, we generally try to set up systems that, like I call a 7,000 watt system a fairly small system. But we generally set up systems to where they don't hit more than around the 80% mark, kind of for that very thing that you said there, but then with most people, they're not off during the summer. You could just go down there, turn the light computer on during that month and know that you use it all up.
Can you explain the man, how the demand meter works?
The, I demand, the way a demand meter works is it takes, it takes a high point. Whenever you hit a high point, now this is, I'm a little hesitant, I, I did not, that's one specific I did not get from the Ava, so, is there anybody here from the power company? If I'm giving something that's wrong, I do want to be corrected. Is there anybody that knows? Most power companies, the way they work, is a demand is set for one year. So if during this month, you hit a high point, then you pay off of a whole series of ratios and equations, if you're, if you set a demand that now you owe $300, you will pay $300 for one year to that point, unless there's a point here that you go up to $320 and it goes to your 20. For that, it, it, it always goes by every high point and that's how you pay your demand for the year. Now one thing, I say, what I'm gonna say here, I'm gonna say real hesitantly, because I don't wanna come in and, and say that we can drop your demand. I think there's a real good chance we could drop your demand with a big solar system on one of these others, doesn't matter on the bus barn, but on one of these others. And that is because the school's a little bit unique in the fact that most of your, most of your power consumption is when the sun is shining. And your demand is pretty well set by your air conditioner. And so, when does the air conditioner really need to run? When the sun's shining hot and that's when your solar system would be producing. I think there'd be a real good chance that it would knock your demand down, but all it would take is one free deal where you all of a sudden, for some reason, set a demand on a, on a point when it caught you and then I've made a liar out of me and I don't, I don't want to promise something that I can't, you know, don't know that. But there is a good chance it would actually lower the demand.
So if, if you lowered the demand, would the payoff time be less?
Oh yes. Yes, you know, if you take any of those, if you could drop your demand by a hundred dollars a month, you know, that all of a sudden increases your ROI a lot.
So are there other ways to drop that demand, like with controllers or devices that keep, you know, or air conditioners to get on at the exact same time? Do we have those? We do?
It cycles, the power, it all comes on, cycles out, it's where none of everything's getting on at the same time.
Is that something that we program or do we have a company that comes in?
The company that's installed it and still, they help us if we have issues, yes, money on the system.
Do we have that in all the buildings?
We have that in high school, middle school has it, elementary has it, pack has it. Preschools don't.
Is that on the timer?
So it's a computer program and it's, it, it cycles on when, so when it's cooling, when it's called for cooling, when it works and when it shuts off, so it's really school hours. So the air conditioner, then it rolls up to 78, rolls back down to 72 or the heat, vice versa, just like you can program a thermostat in your home, but that's what, the thermostat's on the wall, that's what, they're programmable and run off computer system.
One of the things I was wondering, electricity goes off for 15 minutes and comes back on, are all those units gonna come back on all at once?
I have no idea. I can't answer that.
I'm sure if they have a program like that in there, I'm sure that's calibrated into it, because that is where, I mean, it would be ignorant if it didn't, that should be in that program.
CTS group is the group that's installed.
Should be a good question to ask.
Yeah, I, I can't answer that question, but I can ask.
But I would about lay money on the table that's there, because that's, that's when places set demands.
I'd say you're probably right, but.
It'd be a good question.
What if it's mine?
Yeah, I, I will ask that question.
If you might, you know, we could answer.
We thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Does anyone want any more copies of these maps for any reason?
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you, thank you for the hour.
Anybody got anything to say, if anybody wanna say anything?
I just didn't have a lot of time to look at it all, so I'd like to, I'd like to look at it for a while. Understand a little bit better.
Make us a motion to postpone it till next month.
I have one, one question. I know just enough about electric big meters. I'd like to be able to see the electric bills for those three meters, on a monthly basis, so I can watch the demand and, and figure out how much, look at how many degree days we have, for instance, I mean, you can get that on the, anywhere on the internet and just try to figure out if there's some way we can save a little money somewhere.
Yep. It's, it's gonna be more than three meters, isn't it?
Well, you got three demand meters on.
And those are the biggest part.
Yeah.
Okay. Rest of them are like our houses.
Yeah.
You just like a meter on your house.
Yeah, it's residential.
Okay.
Copy of that?
Get him.
Yeah, that's easy.
Do we need to?
You don't need to do it.
You might have to do it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
If anybody has any questions in the meantime, you've got my information. I'll give you a call. Thank you very much.
I enjoyed that, I liked that. Next item on the agenda is remote construction slash COVID.
So, year to date or school year, since August 24th to date, we've had eight staff positive and 10 kids positive. I know you hear from me, you think a lot, but, but it's not counting the quarantine kids, we're just talking about positive cases. So, as of 5 o'clock today, when we walked over here, we've had eight staff and 10 kids, K-12.
How many of the quarantined were positive?
We've got that, I have to pull it, it's, it's off the top of my head, so the largest group we quarantined was 17 at one time. Usually it's three to four, but the largest group was 17. We had a group of 10. I think we've had one person quarantined twice, one student. So, we're approaching 100 probably.
So our parents having a problem?
Not talked to a mad parent yet. And I talked to, you know, besides today, Mr. Dalton got to do it today because I was gone to a meeting, but I, I call every parent that has, that kid that has to be quarantined or that's positive. Not talked to a mad one, they don't understand. And appreciate the phone call, so, and if they have more information, I ask them to call me back, we actually got to get one back, because the kid had more information than, than I did, so we went and measured and we got, that kid got to come back, so. Knock on wood, it will happen, it will be a frustrated parent, I understand that, but they've all been very cooperative.
So, we talked a lot.
We really covered a lot. We covered a lot of it, you know, truly, what I wanted to talk most about, I mean, we are, we are looking at how successful our students are being with the remote instruction, any of that, the percentage of kids that are being successful, it is different in each building. I think part of that, the parent of an elementary student, likes for that student to go virtual, there's no expectation on that parent's part that those students are gonna do it on their own, they know they're gonna be there and have to support them and help them through that. The older our student's kid, one, the more experience they've had doing the courses at least, and the more self-sufficient, they're gonna be missing, and some are doing just fine and some are not. So that, truly that's been the driving force on the conversation, you know, how can we best meet the needs for our students while also trying to figure out what's gonna work most effectively for our teachers in? I think we covered a lot of the ground.
So, talk about that.
So, at the end of first quarter, elementary is gonna allow new students and parents that want their student to return to seated, to do so at that time. But just some logistics with class structures and the electives different in each building, just due to class makeup, middle school's gonna do the same. We're gonna let students that want to return to seated instruction do so at the quarter. High school, we're trying to work out the details of what that would look like. It is just the logistics at the high school level, taking that on, I, I think it was this example today, I may have already said it here this evening, you know, you look at a middle school student's schedule, truly, they're all taking the same four core classes basically, and then there are six or seven electives for them to choose from. When you get to the high school level, they're not even taking the same electives, you know, everybody's taking four English classes, but there may be eight options to choose from. You know, as they get into that upper level, you know, you go to factor indoor credit classes, they're just, again, you know, we're talking, maybe there's 10 options for an AP student, there may be hundreds of different combinations at the high school level, so just the logistics of that, what it does to your staff, you know, again, pays is better for the student, yes, now can we make that work with staff without making that worse? But, you know, those are the kinds of things we're trying to figure out. You know, when I talk about the quote we're looking at on that online delivery system, that's it, you know, if I get a student that is not being successful virtually with the current setup, just looking at that other option, is that something they're gonna be more successful with?
Can we bring them in, even if they weren't successful? First quarter, can we bring them in and, and access that online delivery system and at least get them some credits this fall, to get them back on track, if they've gotten behind?
Something I don't think I mentioned earlier, we were talking about that, so that student, I think you may be asked, you know, how many students are failing classes, there, there are several. And when we're talking about those conversations with principals and parents and students, you know, we've even talked about that, okay, your student is, is not passing X number of classes at this time, we understand you have concerns about coming into the regular school day, but to continue in this route, to be successful, you, you need to come to small group tutoring so many times a week to continue this route, you gotta do. We're just discussing lots of different scenarios there, and that's it, when we sit down with the parents, we wanna be able to offer potential solutions. That's what parents are gonna want when we're having those conversations, you know, it's, easy is the wrong word. We can sit down and point out, hey, here are the facts, here are the grades, what we wanna be able to do is, we all want the same thing, we want that student to be successful, here's some possible ways we can do that, while being mindful of where we are with our number of cases in the county, in the school and in the district.
So are you saying that those students that are virtual, that wanna come back to class and they're behind, they won't be going back into the regular seated class with the teacher? Will they be going to a special tutoring class to get caught up first? Or is that teacher gonna have to further take a heavy load to try to get that, that student caught back up?
And that's what we're trying to figure out, because we can't just throw that load on top of that teacher. So that's what we're, we're talking with teachers about, trying to figure out how that works best. I can't, I can't make that decision in a silo, because I need a very, to figure out how that works best. Some teachers, you know, we've had some kids that, that wanted to come back early, some, some teachers want them, because they can get caught up, we've had some teachers that are teaching virtually, that some of their virtual kids wanted to come back, they came back and even though the teacher's teaching virtually, the teacher wanted them in their Trying to figure out those issues currently and what the best avenue to not overburden teachers, but help kids be successful. So that's why one of the issues that, we're gonna expand our edgenuity program, which is our alternative school program, which is computer-based curriculum, you know, we have some kids that are gonna have a very hard time getting their credits at the high school, so we can get them in edgenuity and we can at least get them some credits this semester and they would not have to sit, they would not be placed back in that classroom that they were currently enrolled in.
Is that just at the high school level?
So.
We just have a credit.
Yeah, they're talking about credits.
We're talking about credit.
The middle school teachers, and I don't remember the words of mine now, I know Mrs. Nelson met with them, I think Dr. Pan or Dr. Hall, she talked to his elementary teachers. Is, and it was, those were building decisions, teachers' decisions, to make that call at quarter, so.
I believe if you went and polled our staff and said they're all have to come back Monday, the vast majority of teachers was, yes, I know they're a different place, if you can go in front of me, let's go. The issue is, we can't require them all to come back at this point, we just don't feel like with where we are with the cases, the vast majority would be no questions asked. That was the conversation today that we had about, hey, I want them all, I want them all right now, because I know that's better for the students. And that's, again, that gets them in a setting that they're, that they're used to, they're used to differentiating all over the board, that's all we do.
How long were we prepared to let these students?
Let them tell?
Well, before we, before we do something, you know, I, I mean, is there?
We've been doing it for weeks, no, I, I guess you're gonna have to play around what you need, I mean, do.
I mean, who's asking, can we make them, make their parents bring them back to school?
Is there?
Are you guys, I want you to answer the question.
So, you know... So, you know, I'm not sure that, well, first of all, there's a state law in Missouri that says that they have the right to a virtual education if they want. We'd have to pay for it. It'd have to be different, but I'm hesitant. I mean, to say that, you know, if every kid that's failing, we send out a letter and say, you absolutely have to come back. Is that something that's going to be supported? But, you know, I, I don't know that you can do that with, with, in the current situation that we're in, in the, with COVID. There's going to be legitimate health concerns. There's, I mean, we are at the high school level, in order to stay virtual second semester, you're going to fill an application. It's going to have to be approved. There's some caveats to that. If you have health concerns in your home, if you have issues in your, you know, that attribute to, you need not to be in this environment. But I don't know, I, I don't know what that looks like.
Here's a funny story I heard, and I know there are more out there just like it. Elderly lady has granddaughter living with her and she didn't want to bring her to school, let her come to school because she was afraid she'd bring COVID back. Lady says, what happens to her if I die? Because of all she's got.
Correct.
So, you know, I don't know the answer to that question, what you need to do there, but somehow you got to accommodate.
Correct, and I agree with that. That's why I think we can send a blanket statement and say, you got to come during this time. That, that's, those are the things that we're, that make us hesitant to ever do that.
Given the circumstances.
Given the circumstances.
Current circumstances. Because of that scenario, no, it is, that conversation sounds like, I mean, you argue. You're trying to clearly outline the significance of the impact we're talking about. You know, when you say that, this student continues down this path, potentially not graduating with the class, or potentially, you know, those are the kinds of conversations you're having. Again, that's extreme. Those are extreme cases, but that's what you're asking about. Those are the kinds of conversations you're going to have in those cases. We have students that are seated every year now. It is, that number is.
Person by person.
Yep.
Everybody good?
I have one more question related to the current thing. I've always kind of had in the back of my mind that we should offer maybe more vocational programs than what we do. And, and again, this is down the line. This is not now. If we had vocational programs in the summertime for summer school, would we get state funding?
Yeah.
Well, I was trying to figure out, and I don't know, you've got to know if you're going to have attendance to it.
Yeah, it's going to make.
Welding class, electrical class, how to put in a doorknob in a house?
Make maintenance and repair.
Yeah. Can we not make a class out of that?
Yeah, we absolutely can.
Can we generate enough interest in that to make classes in the summer, you think?
Fifteen kids is a break-even point for summer school. We could absolutely offer that class if we have a teacher that wants to teach. Teachers, we don't limit that at all. We let teachers make class proposals. I mean, if they can, if we can get enough kids signed up, we have it. There's never, I've never, we've never limited summer school class.
Could we pull kids from other schools if we all?
Absolutely. Open our own at summer school. Yep. You can go anywhere you want in the state of Missouri for summer school. So, yeah? That's all we have.
Okay.
Next item, policy GC BDA discussion.
So we passed that policy last month. Are we up sick leave pay for teachers? Not sick leave, I'm sorry. We have the sub-rate pay for teachers and we also up the payout for unused sick leave for teachers that have ten, accumulate ten days per year. I thought I was going to have a plan for you, but PSRS has given me different information twice now. Gave Kelsey different information than they gave me, so I need to take another month. I might have to talk to the attorney that makes the rules up there. I kind of filled Dan in and I can fill you in at some point, but briefly go ahead. So PSRS told me in August and September that, August or September, that a payout on unused sick days could go towards your retirement benefit. So we were trying to figure out how to make that work because you can only see a 10% increase from one year to the next without changing positions. That is a PSRS rule. So a teacher couldn't see more than a 10% increase in her salary and it'd be PSRS eligible. She could receive the money, it just wouldn't count towards retirement. So if you were paying out a hundred sick days of $10,000, you can see the issues with that. That's more than a 10% raise. So I was trying to figure out, okay, you could do maybe a third, third, and a third and buy it out over, buy it out over three years so they could see the maximum benefit. So anyway, so I talked to a gentleman at PSRS and he said, yes, you can absolutely do that. So we were talking about it today. I just wanted to talk through it to make sure that I was making sense when I said it. But I, I asked Kelsey, our bookkeeper that deals with PSRS, I said, hey, I want you to make sure you hear the same thing I heard. So it's very difficult to get ahold of them these days, but you can always get an online chat. So she had an online chat with them today and I had her print it off just so I have it in writing. And the gentleman today says that you have to report it as gross wage, sick leave payout. You report as gross wages or a retirement incentive like we give for like $400, $300. It cannot go towards increasing their retirement benefit. It can, you have to report it as gross pay, but it does not count towards increasing their retirement benefit. It's ineligible for that. So I'm going to call Omar tomorrow or Monday and try to get a third answer because we paid two different. We, we can still pay them. Just won't up their retirement.
It won't, this, this one here said it won't, it won't up their retirement.
Correct. They'd still get the money and you wouldn't have to take PSRS out of it. You just have to take state federal tax out of it.
We pay what, $5,600 a year in insurance for them?
Yes, they.
It seems kind of opposite. If they're going to be allowed to take the insurance payment every year toward their retirement, why wouldn't they allow them to take their sick pay toward their retirement?
No, you're the point. I agree with you. I, I was hoping it would, and that's why I was trying to figure that third, third, and a third buy down like the last three years to make it, they could get the biggest bang for their buck.
But if it works, 100 days, if you, if, if you're a 30-year teacher and you have 100 days, it's $2,500 if you're added to your retirement.
Yeah.
We don't know if that's going to work.
But we're going to keep working on it.
Okay.
I just need to give you some wording for that and I don't have it. But now you know what, we'll talk about it again.
All right. We don't need to do nothing about that, correct?
No.
Next item, MSBA 2020A, policy updates. I think, I think we've all had the policy updates and there's one that you.
Yes, so I.
Problem with?
Well, I don't have a problem with it. I just think it's going to be a problem. So a couple of things. So I think we need to, I don't have any issues with the majority of the problems. We do need to, on BBFA, that is the policy about gifts. You know, if a vendor comes or takes the, you know, if we're at a conference and a vendor wants to take the board out for dinner or something like that. I think we do have to set a limit at that. Our current limit is $100. I would recommend keeping it at $100. So we do have to save it. We do have to set that limit. But then my, my concern is policy IC, and that is the academic calendar. I agree with every part of this. The board sets and adopts the calendar and the board shouldn't make any changes to the academic calendar. That is the board's job. My, my only concern in this policy is it says that the board has to make the decision if we're going to shut a building or a school down for, for two weeks or one, over one week. Just like we did with fifth grade, you know, we had to, to shut them down for two weeks to, during this COVID time to stop spread. I called each individual board member before that announcement was ever made. But we would actually have to have a board meeting in order to do that. And that's, that's a concern.
So can we change that?
So alls you have to do is take out on, on policy IC, we would only strike, we'd leave the policy intact. We would strike. The board will make the final decision on amendments to the board adopted calendar, period. School closures that are expected to last longer than a week and, and decisions, well, and I don't even have a problem with it. The board adopted calendar and to end the school year early. I think that'll, because I think you need to make that decision too. We didn't last spring, but that would have been fairly easy to do. But school closures that are expected to last longer than a week, I would like to see those wording striked.
That's not one of the critical areas. It's not against the state. It's not going against the state.
No, it's not. It's not. It is not.
So in what instance is that a problem?
So if we, like this week, on Sunday, when we got all of our positive COVID notices, if we couldn't have staffed the elementary, we would have had to shut the elementary down. And we figured out how to staff it. We would have had to have a, if we were to have school on Monday, which we didn't, because we have PD day, we'd have to have, I'd have to call and try to have a board meeting, emergency board meeting Sunday night.
Even though you're just in the first day or it goes past the weekend?
So you would make that decision to close for a certain amount of time because you need to let parents know how long you're going to be closed for.
Right now, he can call each others individually and make the decision. And the way it's set up, we would actually have to have a board meeting and make that decision.
And the way the policy reads now, you can, you do that, that's fine. Yeah.
Now, I agree. If I had to go back again, I would. No, we originally shut down for a short period of time and we talked about it, but I'd have the board end the school year early, like we did last March. But, you know, that was, we were only shutting down for a two-week period of time in the beginning and then it kept getting extended. And then actually, setting the calendar, you absolutely set the calendar. I don't do that. So that's the only, that one sentence is the only issue I have with the policy.
We need a motion to approve the policy updates minus.
As presented. You can do it as presented.
Okay. I don't work as presented. That's less fragile for you. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Barton makes a motion. Do we have a second? Dan seconds. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor? Motion passes 7-0. Next item on the agenda is OPA. How did our, I think all of our elementary cafeteria, did everybody came back on the 14th?
Monday, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Correct. As you know, our elementary cafeteria staff, most of them were quarantined. Kayla, we scrambled and figured out what to do. We had to fill, so she split her staff really in half, basically. She ran one, one kitchen manager at high school, ran the elementary. And then we had one, two, three, four, eight, 10 or 12 volunteer spots a day. Is that correct? Close?
Yeah, close.
And then we scaled it down.
Just delivery times, basically, yeah.
Breakfast delivery, feeding kids, feeding breakfast to high school kids. So we do that grab and go in a couple of different spots and then delivering at the elementary. We said volunteers, so we had, Mrs. Sterling was a 7:30 AM volunteer. Dr. Nash fed breakfast how many times? About every day?
Almost every day and lunch.
We just jumped in and pitched in and Lowell was here on Monday and Tuesday. But staff was, staff that weren't directly working with kids every hour jumped in. And Deena volunteered. We just had all responsible by the time she volunteered. But Lowell and I delivered meals and it's good, it's good to do. We got it done.
Did it on Friday? Friday, Monday, was it?
Friday, Monday.
By Monday, they had everything covered and I really didn't have nothing to do except stand around and talk. So I had to visit with several teachers, visit with some kids, visit with cafeteria people and enjoy it.
It went, it went well. It was as good as good as we could hope for. Mr. Dalton and I learned how to glaze donuts. It was our first day. They thought we'd overtasked us the first day, but we learned.
Next board meeting.
We did, since the last board meeting, I told you, we had ordered warmers and those are big, they came in shortly after the last board meeting. They're being used in high school to be sure that, because you have a significant amount of time between lunches to make sure that that food is warm for that second lunch coming through. They're working well. Anything else?
So we were going to talk, we talked a few months ago about discussing OPA around October.
RFP needs to go out regardless of what we do this month.
Do what?
So we talked about in October, we would need to send out an RFP, gather information for a, either contracted food service or do it ourselves. We would have to send something out to get responses from companies to get pricing and then we can make the decision whether we want to do it ourselves or go with the company. That was, that was what I talked about in August. So this month is the month it should be going out.
Yeah. I think my preference would be the district to operate it. I don't know, is there any other discussion? Any ideas on that?
There's no doubt in my mind that I want us to operate the system. So we have some control over it.
So my concern on that would be if we decide to make a decision next year to do something different, what kind of quality, you know, what would OPA do with us, you know, for the second half of the year?
Well, I have trusted, I have trusted Kayla being in the back of the room to, to provide the best quality food that she can provide.
I trust Kayla. I don't trust OPA.
Well, but we're, but she's running the kitchens and preparing the food. And if there's vows that got to be fought, she and I will fight them with OPA, with the company. I mean, because when, to get through the year, if the board decides that they want to go a different direction. I mean, we're contracted, obviously, but we're going to provide good quality service and food to our kids. That's just what we're going to do.
I've got a question a little bit off the subject. Came up earlier tonight. They were talking about kids getting free meals, but you could go back and buy extras.
Yes.
How does that work out on the nutritional thing? Anybody can go buy extras and?
You'll have to answer that one.
So if they get an extra meal, it's considered an à la carte item. So there's things kids can purchase, like they can purchase cookies, they can purchase chips, or they can purchase a second meal. That's considered an à la carte item and goes into another, another part, so to speak. I don't know how to explain that other than it goes into like dollar amounts other than your nutritional meal that you have to provide a child. So with the federal standards, I mean, you have to offer all five foods, but we also. So with the federal standard, I mean, you have to offer all five food tiers, but we also do unlimited veggies, uh, salads. We do a fresh salad every day, we do unlimited fruits, they can always grab those items extra. Now if they wanted a whole nother meal, then we do that, we provide that, but it is charged as a full price lunch.
So they all, do they all know that? Yeah.
Yeah. We have many of them every day that get a second lunch or a second breakfast.
I thought, I thought there was always so much restriction on how much a kid could get in one day.
In the one plate.
Yes.
In the, in the primary plate you serve, it has to be very specific. But, um, à la carte items can go above and beyond that and I don't think there's as many regulations.
There's not really regulations on an à la carte item.
Does that make sense?
Well, I mean, that makes sense, but the, the whole reasoning behind it makes no sense. For, for the government, like in the, the last big law thing they passed to, to limit what you can eat, what kind of nutrition, what kind of grains and, and then say, okay, but if you want to eat that or not eat that, you can go now buy what you want. I mean, it makes, it makes no sense.
Because that meal is, we get, so if, so we get, every meal is subsidized, it's just to the degree it's subsidized. In order to be a subsidized meal, it has to meet these standards. Does that make sense? So, and I guess if they subsidize the second meal, they don't care what you do.
I guess you could say we understand the system, but it doesn't make any sense.
I've heard of that. Well, uh.
Do we need a motion on, you know?
So I'm going to, I mean, I am still investigating, I'm actually taking a trip to know that. To try to, so I can give you some concrete numbers on what it's going to take to operate.
Do you have any idea when you're going to do that?
Talked to Russ Moreland last week, so we're going to try to make that happen in the first part of November. I'm going to go spend the day and know that, meet with his.
Can I go to Kirbyville too?
Yep. You call them too?
Sure.
But I just need to get some concrete numbers from their directors on what it costs, how many people, all that.
Yeah, I can give you a contact information for Kirbyville if you need it, okay?
Yeah. I'm going to do the best I can to get a, get you a projected budget. Up there. And then I think, so you have something, you, so the question I have is I have planned on sending R F Ps out to companies. Doesn't mean you have to do anything with them, once we receive them, just to give us something to look at, it's up to you though. Proposals, I guess is the.
Look at it?
Is the.
I don't need to look at the companies, I've heard about three of them already.
Proposals.
Yeah, they'll be fine.
Okay.
I'd be real interested in the Kirbyville, what they've got going on.
More information, doesn't cost you anything.
Good, everybody's good with it, yeah. Anything else? Good?
Good.
I need a motion to adjourn. Mark makes a motion to adjourn, Brandy will you second it please? Brandy second, is any discussion?
I was ready to raise my hand.
All in favor? Motion carries, seven zero. Motion, meeting adjourned.
Have a good day, Mike.